Welcome, everyone, to Canyon City Planning Commission Meeting Tuesday, October 25th, 2017. Would you all join me and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Denise, will you call roll, please?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Chairman Maloney?
Here.
Commissioner Bates?
Here.
Commissioner Dorito?
Here.
Commissioner Clark?
Here.
Commissioner Hamrick?
Here.
Commissioner Harmon?
Here.
Commissioner Ladue?
Here.
And Councilmember Gill?
Here.
Thank you. Before we get started, I guess we have two commissioners that are leaving us. I don't know why, but they're leaving us. So Commissioner Bates is running for City Council at large.
Yeah.
And you're not unopposed, so good luck. I hope you get that.
Thank you.
Thanks for-
I've enjoyed it. You know, I came on to be just temporary, and now the temporary's done, so I need to move on.
Okay, well, you're always welcome back.
Thank you.
You know, whatever happens. And Commissioner Hamrick is running unopposed, so that's a done deal.
That's all I needed was one vote, and I think I got that.
Okay.
That might be tough.
Well, good luck to you both, and thanks for being on the commission.
If I might clarify, too, this will be Mr. Bates' last meeting, and I hope that Mr. Hamrick will come for the rest of the year, as he won't be starting council until January, if we do end up having meetings-
Correct.
-those last two.
And I do plan to do that.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Okay, so at this point, we'll ask for approval of minutes from the September 19th, 2017 regular meeting. Are there any corrections to those minutes? Comments? Hearing none. Need a motion and a second to approve the minutes, please.
So moved.
Second.
Who's second? Second by Commissioner Dorito. Denise, call roll, please.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Bates?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Hamrick?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda has come around a few times. Public hearing zone change from R2 to MH1 to R3 zone for Lot 1. Oasis, New Horizons subdivision exemption, also known as 1261 Park Avenue. Like to open this public hearing. Are we moving forward with this tonight, Terry?
Yes, we are. I would like to ask if the applicant or representative is here tonight?
And you are?
Okay.
Okay.
Do you want me to open the hearing first in the verbiage?
Yes, please.
The provisions of the City Municipal Code, and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the City of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as of set forth verbatim. Will the applicant please approach the podium? State your name and address, please.
My name's Matthew Lapp, and I'm the Chief Financial Officer.
Terry, did you have questions for the applicant before we started?
I do not. I just wanted to make sure that they were here, in case you guys did have questions of them later.
Okay. Well, I'll let you have your time here if you'd like to explain anything to us.
Okay. It's basically just something that the city had asked us to do, to kind of combine the lots and make the zoning. Before, we had residential and mobile homes on the same, kind of on the same lot, so we separated that out.
Okay. Thank you.
I can go into much more detail.
Okay, then, thank you. Can we have a staff report, please?
Thanks, Matt. Yes, Chairman, and members of the commission. New Horizons has, we've been talking to New Horizons since I came here four years ago, and I believe that staff was speaking to them prior to that as well. They have a large piece of property here, and they wish to continue to develop the property. And in order to do that, we wanted to make sure that they were trying to bring the property into conformance, and so we started to talk to them about some of the problems. There were addressing problems. There were non-conforming uses and structures on all of these properties. There were several lots or parcels that had, where there were encroachments of structures and that kind of thing. There were also boundary discrepancies that had been based on some conflicting surveys that had been done in the past. So we asked them to, as they, rather than coming in piecemeal and asking for a specific thing that they would like to do, if they would start to think of this property as a whole and to comprehensively plan it. So they agreed to do a subdivision exemption, which was recorded in May of this year, which subdivided the property. I'm going to use this marker here. This is still not a very good view, but I'll try to point out most of the issues. So we created a line here and put all of, this is the mobile home park, so all of the mobile home park is now on one parcel. This left the remaining piece at this point that has three single-family homes on it, and one of, I noticed that one of the diagrams that you have only shows two single-family homes, but that's not accurate. There are actually three out there now. There's a little center that they're using currently for Bible studies. They have a shop here, and they have talked on and off about perhaps wanting to do more types of development here in furtherance of their ministry, which you know is to take care of the kids who are, kids of people who are incarcerated. And we want to help them do that, but we want to try to get rid of as much of the nonconformities as we possibly can. So one of the steps after the subdivision exemption was to rezone this portion right here, which is hatched and is currently MH1, but contains no mobile homes, and it's not intended to do that. The other thing is that right in this corner, because of the way the lot lines were readjusted, this is also right now R2. So this is R2, this is MH1, and we suggested that they go to R3. And R3 is high-density residential, but it does allow the most, the highest use or intensity of use in an R3 district. There is, although it's not, R3 is not actually adjacent to this property, it is within a couple of hundred feet of the property, and that was our suggestion. So to that end, they submitted an application. It unfortunately was postponed for the last three months, because as I alluded to, there were boundary discrepancies in this area. One of them happened to affect a property just to the west that was owned by an adjacent property owner, and she was very concerned about that, and New Horizons did not want to go forward until that had been resolved. And as far as I know, it is in the process of being resolved, if it hasn't been already. I also include in this packet a letter that I sent to Ms. Cristelli as we were working through this with our city attorney, explaining to her how that gap was actually resolved primarily through the court decree that was used to establish the boundaries of this parcel. So with that, and not going into a lot more detail, I'm happy to answer your questions, and if you have any other questions for the applicant, I'd be happy to go through that. Before I do that, though, we had attached a condition to this application, which Catherine, the attorney, and I have reworked, because the condition that was attached was probably not appropriate. And I would like to go through that with you real quick. Basically, what it does is it establishes one of the homes, the home that they are requesting to have a remodel, as the conforming structure and use on the property. And then it establishes also the other uses and structures on this particular property, the red-hatched property, Lot 1, as being non-conforming. So it doesn't restrict them to building permits, but identifies conforming and non-conforming structures. So let me read it to you. "The single-family home on Lot 1, commonly referred to as 1261 Park Avenue, also known as residential occurrence number two in the Fremont County assessor's records, is designated the conforming use and structure. All of the other uses and structures on the property shall be considered non-conforming and subject to any applicable provisions of the Canyon City Municipal Code regulating non-conforming structures and uses." You will also find a findings of fact and advisory report. And you guys are familiar with that. You'll have two motions, one for the findings of fact, and then the second is your recommendation. Again, if I can answer some questions for you, I'd be happy to do that. Oh, one other thing. One of the main, one of the main components of this is that once this zoning is established, we've done the subdivision, we've corrected all of the addressing, we are in the process of doing the zoning, we hope that they will shortly come back and do a PUD for this piece of land, so that we can, they don't necessarily have to resubdivide it, but they would establish a comprehensive plan for it. And I know that they've been working with some of their other properties in the city and have made, suggested some other uses, and a PUD plan seems to be the more appropriate planning mechanism for them. And that's what we hope will be the next and final step.
Any questions of staff or the applicant? Commissioner Hamrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No question, but I just wanted to commend staff for working with the applicant. This is a very, it looks like a very thorny issue, and the willingness to work with the applicant to try to achieve an outcome that's satisfactory to all parties deserves some praise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Did they purchase this property in 2012, correct?
I believe that's, yes.
Then this is more for my understanding, but was the property zoned this when they purchased the property, or what, did it zone, did the zoning change after?
No. The property was MH1, and then they also own another piece of property to the southeast that has a single-family home on it and is zoned R2. So the whole thing was zoned R, MH1.
How was this discovered? The issue?
Well, they have come in periodically asking for permits to do different kinds of things, and so we go through an analysis at that time and see if it meets code.
Okay. In a case like that, how long do they normally have to bring the property up to code? I mean, this has been going on for quite a while, but-
It has. They have asked-
I don't have a problem with it, truthfully. I'm just kind of curious about-
Right. They have until, there is no time limit. They may never come back, for instance, to do a PUD. But in this particular case, we've designated a lot of the structures and uses out there as non-conforming, so they can't be extended or added on to. So that's a limiting factor for them, and maybe they will want to come in and do the PUD so that they have, they're able to do some expansion.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, up-
Commissioner Hamrick? Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a question of the applicant. Could you come back to the microphone, please? Has New Horizons Ministries read the suggested condition of approval?
Yes, we're aware of the need to do this before we can do any type of improvements.
And you're good, you're accepting of that condition?
Yes.
Thank you.
I will, let me clarify. This condition that I just read to you, they were not aware of.
Thank you.
That was just crafted in the last hour.
But the concept is the same as the one that's in your packet.
It is.
Thank you.
So what you just explained to us is not part of our packet. This is something that just came up, right?
Yeah, so the condition that's in your packet was a little broader than I think was, was farther than the city could reach, I'll say, legally, and so we wanted to kind of narrow it down a little bit, and so that's what the other language is for, so.
Okay. Any other questions?
It's actually less restrictive than I, we were going for.
Yeah.
Are there any comments from the audience? Any other questions from the commission? Terry, is that all?
Yes, unless there's other questions.
Okay, I'm going to close this public hearing. There's no further discussion. Now call for a motion and a second on the request based upon the findings. Commissioner Hamrick?
Mr. Chairman, just to, to make a complete motion, we'll need that language. Someone up here will need that language to read that in.
Right.
Maybe-
That's not for the findings, though, right?
You might want to give it to the first thing. I'll go ahead and do it.
Sure.
So it's first, motion for the findings. Can I call for a motion and a second on the findings of fact?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hamrick?
Yes. The, Mr. Chairman, I make the following notion, motion, that the Canyon City Planning Commission, upon conducting a public hearing on the above-captioned zone change request, and after considering the testimony presented by the applicant, city staff, and any other interested parties finds as follows. "The land to be rezoned was zoned in error and is presently zoned is inconsistent with the policies and goals of the city's comprehensive master plan. And two, the area for which rezoning is requested has changed or is changing to such a degree that it is in the public interest to encourage a redevelopment of the area. And three, the proposed rezoning is necessary in order to provide land for community-related use which was not anticipated at the time of the adoption of the city's comprehensive plan or master plan, and that such rezoning will be consistent with policies and goals of the comprehensive master plan."
I'm going to make a recommendation that we strike number three. There is no community-related land use. But the other two-
I so amend my motion.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have a second?
I second that.
Any further discussion? Denise, call roll, please.
Commissioner Hamrick?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Bates?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Okay, and the second part, the motion to approve or approve with the condition. I need a motion and a second, please. Commissioner Hamrick?
Chairman Maloney, since I have the language, I'll make that motion-
Thank you very much.
Based on the above findings of fact, the Canyon City, I move that based on the above findings of fact, the Canyon City Planning Commission hereby makes the following recommendation to the Council of the City of Canyon City. Approval of the request for zoning with the following condition. "The single-family home on Lot 1, commonly referred to as 1261 Park Avenue, aka residential occurrence number two in the Fremont County assessor's records, is designated the conforming use and structure. All of the other uses and structures on the property shall be considered non-conforming and subject to any applicable provisions of the Canyon City Municipal Code regulating non-conforming, regulating non-conforming structures and uses."
We have a second.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Clark? Any further discussion?
And you're okay with that not referring to a PUD?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, Denise, call roll, please.
Certainly. Commissioner Hamrick?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Bates?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is a public hearing, special review use for accessory dwelling unit at 520 Hamilton Road in the RL Zone District. I'd like to open this public hearing. "The provisions of the City Municipal Code, and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the City of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as of set forth verbatim." Can we please have a staff report?
Yes, Chairman, members of council, excuse me, members of Planning Commission. This is a special review use request for an accessory dwelling unit at 520 Hamilton Road in the RL Rural Living District. Written notice was mailed to all property owners within 300 feet, as required by law. The applicant, Tim Combe, has made a request to establish an accessory dwelling unit at this location. It is allowed in the RL District as approved through special review use. You'll note that the circumstances of this are very similar to the one that we heard just a couple of months ago, where they are going to establish the ADU prior to a new home being built. We have some conditions that have to do with that. This is almost exactly the same circumstance. The only difference is this, and I won't, I'm not going to go into all of the details. There's an occupancy requirement in the RL District, just like in R1, that requires occupancy by the owner six months out of the year on this property. Mr. Combe does not own the property currently, but it has been established from the time we started these conversations with him in pre-application that his dad would be giving him the property, and then he would be building a new house and then creating the ADU. Because we have, and that's a hard and fast rule, and not too long ago, the City Council denied an application that was in the R1 District for that very reason, because there was not residency on the property. So we have added another condition to this particular application, requiring that some evidence, probably just a copy of the deed, when that property is transferred from one owner to the other, and we will require that. I'll just go through the recommended conditions of approval. Other than that, as we have seen this, based with the conditions, this application will meet the regulations in Chapter 1715, which is the accessory dwelling unit. And those are in your application, I mean, in your staff report, and you can refer to them. It's in Appendix A. So the applicant has to comply with the requirements of Chapter 1715, and I'm going to modify that just a little bit. It's 1715.030, in particular, Section J 2 through 6. So all of those are requirements for a certificate of compliance for an existing ADU. And then they will also have to obtain a certificate of occupancy for the new single-family dwelling. Item number two is that they will have to get all of the required building, electrical, plumbing permits for any construction or alterations that may be necessary for compliance with J 2 through 6 for the existing building. They also have to comply with the Fremont Sanitation District and Fire District regulations, and they also have to have a floodplain development permit. An elevation certificate was already provided to us, and they are completely aware of what they may have to do for the new structure or the existing structure. Item number four is that written evidence of transfer of the property. Item number five is material representations, which is a standard condition in all of our And number six just spells out what that ADU application is for specifically. And they have 18 months to build the house and get those two occupancies. If you would like to ask any questions about this, I'd be happy to, and the applicants are here.
Okay. Would the applicant like to come up and talk about this project?
So I'm Tim Cohen, and that's my father, Doug Cohen. I live at 520 Hamilton now. It's a 698 square foot house, and I have a family of four, so it's kind of small. I can add on to it, or I can add on to a building half the square footage. So I would like to build a new structure right next to it in the field. That's really it. I'd just like to build another house directly to the north of it from the existing structure, which would be accessed off of Hamilton Road, and that's it.
All right. Does the commission have any questions of the applicant? Yes, Commissioner Hamrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Later this evening, we're going to be discussing the Arkansas River Quarter Master Plan. So this is a question for staff. Is this resident, residents within, or this property within the planning area of the master plan?
I would say probably yes. I believe they received a notice when we, we didn't have to, but we ended up noticing folks within 300 feet. Is that correct, Doug?
Doug Cohen, 1102 Vine. According to the Arkansas River Master Plan, there is another parcel of our property that has been overlaid as Riverfront Residential. That's the last piece. To my knowledge, our present property and the property that my son hopes to build on is not in that active plan.
Thank you.
You bet.
His property is, I'm sorry, if you look at the map, his, the property for the ADU is here, and then I think Doug may be referring to these two properties.
The one property, the one on the left beside the house.
Oh, I can-
Here's the property we're helping build, right here, okay? We own this particular piece of property. There's a little house next to us that we don't own, but we own this piece of property, and I think that's part of the, I think Chuck James owns here. This is a property I think that has been looked at for, for residential.
I can clarify that when we get to that part of the agenda. That's not correct. But I will say that that area generally, when you're looking at a planning area from a planning study, we did look at areas and lands north of the Arkansas River in terms of potential connections to the river. So from that perspective, I would say yes.
So from that perspective, I would say yes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of staff from the commission? Real crystal clear? Okay.
And I do have an advisory report right behind your staff report, again, has the two motions.
Okay, any comments from the audience pertaining to this? No? Okay, well, I'll close the public hearing then. And I now call for a motion and a second on the request based upon the findings. Commissioner Hamrick?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move that Canyon City Planning Commission, following consideration of the special review use request for an accessory dwelling unit in the R-L Zone District, and after considering the testimony presented by the applicant, city staff and any other interested parties finds as follows. Notice of this public meeting was properly given as required by law. The application does comply with all requirements of Chapter 1724 of the CCMC and any applicable written rules in the following respects. The applicant has provided a complete and generally accurate application, including all required supplemental documentation, and has paid for the, and has paid the application fee. Two, the application is consistent with the purposes of the zoning ordinance as declared in Section 17.O4.O2O of the CCMC in the following respects. The applicant has addressed the location, nature of the request, and character of the surrounding property to assure that the proposed use will be compatible with surrounding land uses and with the goal of promoting coordinated and sound development in the neighborhood. And three, the special review use is designed to be compatible with the surrounding land uses and the area of its location in the following respects. The use will not generate objectionable noise, odor, or other environmental influence, nor negatively impact the availability of parking for the surrounding area. It will provide a use similar to other residential uses in the neighborhood.
Thank you, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Denise, call roll, please.
Certainly. Commissioner Hamrick?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Bates?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
And Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Motion passes, and there's a second motion based on these findings of fact. Can I get a motion and a second, please? For approval, or approval with conditions?
May I make a really quick interjection here? Under condition number one, if you do decide to go with the conditions, could you just say a condition after you read it as amended? I won't have you guys know where that additional code thing should be, but I'll make sure I get that in there.
You're already talking about 17.15.030?
.030, yes.
Thank you. So, do we have a motion, please? Commissioner Hamrick, thank you. Is everyone asleep?
Designated motion maker tonight. Yes, Mr. Chairman, I make the following motion. Therefore, based upon these findings of fact, and after, and after having considered the development features of the proposed use, the Canyon City Planning Commission hereby makes the following recommendation to the Canyon City Council. Approval of the special review use request with the following modifications and/or conditions. One, the applicant shall comply with all requirements of Chapter 17.15, accessory dwelling units of the Canyon City zoning regulations.
Can you insert .030 into that first condition?
.030, yes, as I accept that amendment.
Thank you.
Chapter 17.15.030, accessory dwelling units of the Canyon City zoning regulations, in particular, Section J dot 2 dash 6, 2 through 6. All requirements of Section J dot 2 through 6 shall be completed with a certificate of compliance and shall be obtained prior to or simultaneously with the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the new single-family home. Two, the applicant shall obtain all required building, electrical, and plumbing permits for any construction or alterations that may be necessary for compliance with Section J dot 2 through 6 of Chapter 17 point 15 point O3O. Three, the applicant should comply with any and all requirements of the Fremont Sanitation District and the Canyon City Area Fire District. The applicant shall obtain a floodplain development permit, or permits, for new structure and modifications to existing structure. Four, the applicant shall provide written evidence of the transfer of the subject property to his ownership prior to the issuance of a certificate of compliance for the ADU. Five, unless otherwise modified by this approval or other subsequent decision of the city council, as it may apply to this request, all material representations made by the applicant in its application submittal and/or in any public hearing shall be binding upon the applicant. The applicant's failure to perform in accordance with such material representations could result in the revocation of this approval. And six, the approval hearing granted shall extend only to the ADU plan as it is presented in this application. The existing single-family home shall be converted to an ADU upon the construction of a new single-family home. Said approval shall terminate without any further action by the city if the new proposed single-family home and the existing structure have not received a certificate of occupancy and certificate of compliance, respectively, within 18 months of the approval of this application.
Thank you, do we have a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dorito, any further discussion? Denise, call roll, please.
Certainly. Commissioner Hamrick?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Bates?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Ladue?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes, thank you, Mr. Cohen, Mr. Cohen. Okay, number six on our agenda. I'll wait for Terry.
Good evening. Looking for the pointer with the, or the pointer. Good evening, commissioners. So we are here this evening to discuss the Arkansas River Corridor Master Plan, and with that, I will first toggle, actually have a presentation to walk through basically the plan and everything that was in your packet, so there's more visuals that you can see up on the screen. Okay. So, to start off, let's, we'll go through the extents of the project area. Basically, the extents of the project area were from Tunnel Drive on the west to which, about the connection, right about in this location on the graphic, and we'll zoom in here in a moment to go through that, and McKenzie Avenue on the eastern end. And the length of that is approximately 5.5 miles. The goals of the project were many when initially established by staff, council, city administrator a year or so ago, when this was put into the budget and an RFP was written. So those goals are create an integrated slash comprehensive land use plan for the area, incorporate previously adopted plans, and many of those are referenced here, as well as ongoing efforts, integrate downtown with the river. We know that previously downtown's edge has been identified as US 50, and there's been previously adopted plans and other discussions and documents that have referenced making sure that we include the definition of downtown to extend all the way to the Arkansas River, so that's very important. Number four, maintain and enhance the Arkansas River environment. Five, evaluate economic development activities, including residential. Six, improve the aesthetics of the corridor. Seven, improve connectivity and safety of pedestrians and bicyclists. Number eight, propose zone changes and other regulatory or design requirements to support the vision in the plan. And number nine, to minimize costs and maximize dollars spent on improvements within the corridor.
Ms. Fettler, can I interrupt for a second? I was a little unclear if this was actually a public hearing. Are we actually making a motion to make a recommendation on this before we go into the discussion?
Yes, so I guess I forgot to mention that part, we should open the public hearing.
So I'll, so, no problem, but there was no motion or anything in the packet, but I'll open the public hearing, just so we're back on track, right? Correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So, "Public hearing, consider the Arkansas River Corridor Master Plan as an amendment to the Canyon City Master Plan. The provisions of the City Municipal Code, and in particular Title 17 thereof, the subdivision regulations and the comprehensive plan of the City of Canyon City are incorporated into the record of the hearing as set, as if set forth verbatim." And now we can continue with the staff report, please.
Let me make a clarification for you. When you're doing something like reviewing a master plan or portion thereof, which this is, you won't be making findings of fact necessarily, you will be establishing a resolution, which is in your packet. Now, let me say that we don't have a crystal ball when we prepare these for you, so we are making certain assumptions about how you're going to, how you're going to decide. We may have to revise that resolution tonight based on your final decision, but the resolution is there, it assumes that you will unanimously approve, recommend approval for this. That may not be the case, you may have recommendations that need to go into this resolution so that council can consider it, but rather than the, I just wanted to let you know that rather than findings of fact and advisory report, you're going to be looking at a resolution. And Dina and Catherine would help you revise that at the end of this hearing.
Okay.
Just to let you know that.
Thanks, Ms. Brenner.
Okay, thank you, Terry. So just to continue in terms of the, some of the background of the process itself, the committee members, there were 19 committee members that were appointed by council on February 20th of 2017. Those committee members are listed here. There are basically, again, four primary zones that we're talking about in the study area, and we'll be walking through each one of those, moving from west to east throughout the presentation, and that's how basically the final plan document is organized. So the first zone is the Western Gateway, the second zone is Downtown Core, third zone is Griffin Park, and the fourth and most eastern zone is Eastern Corridor. So the project phases, so this is for the planning process itself, the project was completed in four phases. There was an analysis phase, there was an alternatives phase, a preferred direction phase, and then refinement and final documentation, which basically brought us to the point we are at this evening. So a little bit more about that background on the process. So in 2016, funds were identified in the 2017 budget, and an RFP was released, or request for proposals was released to solicit consultants. In 2017, committee appointed, or council committee was appointed, as noted. The consultant contract was approved in March of 2017. There were four committee meetings this year between May and August. There were also three public open houses between May and August, as well as information posted at Whitewater Festival in June, and more than 100 attendees were at those various open houses. The alternatives phase of the project, the alternatives were available and online on the city's website on June 22nd, or in terms of being actually on the website around June 22nd. The draft preferred direction was available on August 10th, and then most recently was a city council vision committee meeting, that was on September 20th. And at that time, even though we didn't have to, because this is a planning process, we went ahead and specifically did a mailing to all property owners within 300 feet of the Arkansas River, both in the city and the county, so basically within the extents of the, of the study area, the project boundary. And that brings us again to this evening. So this is just giving you a snapshot, a little difficult to read, but the information is online. Basically, if you go on the city's website, click on the left portion of the site where there's a Communities Plans tab, that will pull up the, a series of different links, and one of those is Plans in Progress, where we're keeping current or ongoing planning efforts. And so this is just showing you where that information is online and how to get to that online, and showing that the different components were posted online throughout the process, starting with the alternatives phase, the draft preferred direction, and now the draft document is all online for folks to, to take a look at. So, the input that was received from the first phase of the project, from both the committee and the public, is summarized here, and I've even highlighted some of the comments in bold, as those were some of the key things that we heard over and over. So just to walk through some of those, one of the key issues that we kept hearing was about cleaning up the riverbanks, the additional comments about needing a new rafting takeout, providing additional public parking, moving down a little bit more, there was a concern about not allowing more industrial uses along the river, and for any that exists, to provide some sort of screening for those existing uses that would remain in the near, mid, and perhaps even longer term. The need to have development along the river, including outdoor cafes and things overlooking the river, was something that we heard. Improving river habitat was something else that we heard, and there was a specific team member on board to look at that as part of the consultant team. So in terms of, again, during Phase One, the first phase of the project, during that first open house, there was a DOT exercise, so the consultants put together some questions that were asked, and the actual board is, is on the screen here, and they were given dots, basically sticky dots, that they could vote. And so based on the seven questions that were asked during that DOT exercise at the first open house, the top three priorities that were identified as very important included number one, economic development slash redevelopment, number two, the river health and aquatic improvements was number two, and then the third most important component was a tie between attracting tourism to downtown and enhancing recreation. So those were the top three, or in this case, four priorities from that exercise in Phase One. So based on the input from Phase One and the analysis that the consultant team completed, they created alternatives. And so the, the alternatives, in terms of actually having options, were primarily focused between First and Ninth Streets, and east of Ninth, they were primarily trail or access or stream and riparian improvements that were put forth during that second phase. And the two boards that you see here are basically just one section from that phase of the project that illustrates how different alternatives were put forward. In this case, we're looking at the Fourth Street, Vida Tier, and Ninth Street, and you can see that particularly in this, this corner, kind of the railroad and Ninth Street and the river, there were different options looked at. One looked at hotel development, and one actually looked at exploring this as a opportunity for a community rec center and having a little bit more housing. So there were different alternatives that were put forward during that second phase of the project. So then, based on input again from that second phase of the project, from both the committee and the public, we moved into Phase Three, which was the draft preferred direction. And during that phase, we basically, we got down to sort of one vision. The vision boards that you see here were from that draft preferred direction phase of the project. Again, we went through a process of receiving input from both the committee and the public, and that input then is what is resulting in the document, the full document and the information that you see here this evening. information that you see here this evening. And just to note, the highlight, I'll do that again, the, the red overlay that just popped up on the, the right image, that's the, that's Centennial Park. And the master plan for that park was actually done at the very beginning of this process. So it was sort of out of order, but because of funding that was already allocated for improvements in two thousand seventeen, the master plan for Centennial Park was completed first, and then we brought it out and did the full master plan for the entire quarter. So, input that we received from the second and third phases, I've split that up into two different focus areas. And the first focus area is more that economic development or built environment focus. So the comments that we received, again, from both second and third phases of the project regarding economic development or built environment include, "Let's have less parking and more development along the river, particularly in the key areas between Third and Ninth. That parking should not be front and center along the river's edge." Folks basically had submitted comments that, "I don't want to sell my property." There was a concern about traffic. There was a approval, or sort of positive input, in terms of having a fa, focus of the most active development occurring between First and Ninth. There was discussion about the use of the power plant area would be a good place for rafting companies, as well as some additional park areas and perhaps parking or overflow parking. There was some concern about shops along the river taking away from Main Street. Folks liked the idea of a more retail slash commercial uses close to Main Street with waterfront dining and entertainment, again, to create that synergy between sort of river's edge and Main Street, so that people could potentially move back and forth between the river's edge and Main Street and have options. Comments about removing the current industrial adjacent to the river, providing design standards. There was a concern about losing any historic buildings, and some folks really were excited about the potential for Canyon City. So then, moving into some of the comments that we received from a trails or recreation and open space focus, those comments are summarized here, and that includes concerns by folks on having trails indicated on their property, approval of the, the vision and direction of the plan, the desire to have a trail system on both sides of the river from First to Ninth. Some folks, of course, don't want to see any changes anywhere, and we did receive some comments like that, that came in throughout the process. And like the idea of the, the river trail extensions and preserving natural habitat as much as possible. So based on that, all of the input, we came to the document that you received in your packets. So basically, the draft Arkansas River Corridor Master Plan itself, the entire document. And that plan document is organized as follows. There's an overview chapter in the document. There are then four sections. The four sections, geographic sections that I had mentioned and are indicated again here, are each their own separate chapter in the document. There's then a chapter on wayfinding and signage and a chapter on implementation. So, further, before we go into each section in detail, I want to let folks know that each chapter also includes, and I'm showing the Downtown Core just as an example here, each section includes an ownership map. That was one of the concerns that came out of the committee meeting from council, is to make sure that somehow we're clearly indicating what is private land versus what's public or quasi-public or government lands. And so, a ownership map has been included in every single chapter, every single section, geographic section of the planning area. And this is just one example, and we already know we have one edit on this map because the DOC land is not being represented as, as public. So that's one change that we already know needs to be updated on this particular graphic. But the point is that, you know, much of this land, and as often in, is in planning projects, much of this land is private land. So this graphic indicates what's private land and then where public lands do exist. The second map that is in every section is basically showing the existing land use. And it's just simply referencing the existing comp plan of the city, which now dates to two thousand one. And that was actually an update that was done and completed in two thousand one, so that's now nearly seventeen years old, which is very old in terms of a comprehensive plan for the city. And that's often why we do these area plans or corridor plans, is to make sure that we're providing a more current vision for the community that can be, become an amendment to that comprehensive plan or master plan. So we're showing basically the existing land use currently within each of those sections because there are few instances, not many, where we are recommending some land use changes as part of this. Each section also includes an existing zoning map, and then a floodway, floodplain map. So you get a sense of the realities of, of that in each section. So then, moving into the vision plan. So, starting back again in the Western Corridor in that district, just to walk through some of the highlights on that Western District. Basically, this is US fifty coming into town. This is the Arkansas River that you see here. This is First. And so, we're looking primarily at what is currently the, the Black Hills Energy Site. And so we know that the substation is to remain on this site, and basically, the uses that are being identified here in the plan include everything from a little bit of, of urban, whoa, it's jumping ahead. A little bit of, of urban camping on the western edge of the property, illustrating that takeout on the Black Hills property, as we know that the existing takeout that's upstream may not exist into the future, so we're looking at options for another takeout on the western edge of town. Showing some flexible use areas, overflow parking, and additional trails on the north side of the river, ala the concept of making sure that we're having Riverwalk basically from sort of tunnel drive all the way over to Ninth on both sides of the river as a core tenet of the plan. So then, moving into the Downtown Core. Now, this area is split into two sections. The Downtown Core is obviously the core of the community and the core, core of the entire study area, so there's a lot more detail in this particular section of the plan. So, starting with the Western section, the plan is indicating that, in the future, there may be uses on the north side of the bank of the river, basically between First and the Fourth Street Biduc, that might be redeveloped over time into mixed-use development. Now, that mixed use could include anything from hotel use to restaurant use, other retail use. It may include some residential use. We just don't really know right now. The market will determine that, but we want to make sure that we're identifying the vision and getting the steps in place to allow that to happen in the future as part of this planning effort. We're simply inserting the previously approved and adopted Centennial Park Master Plan. And then, moving east of Fourth, the concept here on the north side of the river shows the potential for a boutique hotel being added into the area, and then I'll address the south side, moving into the next slide. So then, going from Fourth over to Ninth, the south side of the river, we are basically identifying this as sort of, as a mix of uses. One, again, ala the concept of extending the trail on both sides of the river from, from First to Ninth, we're showing a trail that does not exist from, basically from Centennial Park connecting over to Ninth on the south side of the river. And that's also, basically, also including additional green space or open space as an extension of Centennial Park in that core of downtown to have additional open space for the community and, and visitors. We are also showing then, in some areas sort of on the fringe, I guess I would call it, in this location to the south, and then east of Ninth Avenue up until Tenth, we're showing some additional residential or redevelopment, potentially of residential in the future to a higher intensity than exists currently. And then, lastly, I would say, again, this corner of the Arkansas River, the railroad and Ninth, we're showing a mixed-use development in that area that may include a hotel site, some riverfront retail, additional retail along Ninth Avenue, again, a mixed-use site. There's a, a larger kind of shelf or step-down in this area as the river turns, so there's some great views kind of back west from that site, and it also provides an opportunity in the future for potentially two levels of, of trail. A lower trail where folks can get down closer to the river and might be inundated in seasonal times, and then a higher trail that might be adjacent to future cafes and, and that type of use. So then, as I mentioned earlier, there are some sections of the plan where we are proposing land use changes, and that's the reason why this is becoming an amendment to the existing comprehensive plan. And so the Downtown Core is one of those areas that we're proposing, basically a, a new land use category that doesn't currently exist. And I inserted the existing land use, which I know this is a blurry graphic, we don't even have a digital copy of our comprehensive plan, so we created the best digital copy we could, in terms of clarity of information. But basically, when you look at the existing land use, you can see that north of the river is, is basically red in this area, and that just generally means commercial use in, from the existing comprehensive plan standpoint. If you look on the south side of the river here, this green box, per the existing comp plan, is identified as undeveloped, and when you read the language of what that means for the land use category, it basically is identified as future development. So that green box is currently identified anywhere in the comprehensive plan, but specifically here, basically means an area for future development currently, as its land use is identified. And then, the, the gray area, this is the gray area here is obviously the, the existing industrial that we see here, and that's currently industrial as a land use. So, the proposed modifications in this area include sort of this magenta box that you see from First over to Ninth Street, that on the, or actually past Ninth, sorry, this is Ninth here, this is actually Tenth, I believe, or Eleventh. And so basically, we're proposing a new land use category that does not exist called riverfront mixed use. So going back to those vision plans that I showed you, that new riverfront mixed use category would allow those types of uses to come into this area in the future, versus having it be identified specifically as, as commercial use on the north side of the river. Then, moving to the south side of the river, I had indicated, you can see here, that this green box is currently identified as undeveloped, which per the existing definition of that land use category basically means an area for future development, based on our existing comp plan. And so we're proposing to change that to basically parks. That's an existing land use category within the city's comprehensive plan, so we're using that existing land use category and just suggesting to apply it to this area. Then, the third land use change that we're proposing for this particular area is the RR that you see here. Again, going back to that illustrative that I showed you earlier with the idea that in the future, there may be some potential for additional residential, so that we have folks actually walking to the river and within walking distance of downtown to patronize those businesses, we want to make sure that we're accommodating for that from a land use standpoint. So going back to the land use recommendations, we're identifying a new riverfront residential land use category as well. So basically, we're proposing two new land use categories that don't currently exist within the city. A riverfront mixed use category, that's a little bit broader in terms of what would be permitted in that use, and then the riverfront residential land use category that would provide for, say, more of a, options in terms of the type of residential that you might see in these areas. It might be a little bit of a higher intensity of use, again, to have more residents living within walking distance of both the river and downtown. So those are the, basically, most of the land use changes that are being suggested in the entirety of the plan. So then, moving to the next district is Griffin Park. And here, there really are not a lot of recommendations. Most of this land now is, is outside the city limits. The Recreation Park District oversees Griffin Park, and so basically, we were looking at identifying additional connections into Griffin Park and access to the river from the north and the south as part of this portion or section of the plan. And so we have identified potential connections from Lincoln Park that would be able to come down the bluff and connect into the upper bluff trail that exists, and then eventually connect over to the Arkansas River Trail. And then, the one connection or improvement we're showing from the north is basically along Reynolds to make sure that we are permitting bikes and peds better and safer access to get down to the Arkansas River Trail and, and the river itself from that location. And then, I would say, the other, really, two suggestions for this area are, one, just to improve the western part of Griffin Park in terms of its entrance in Western Gateway, perhaps reorganizing the parking and having sort of a kiosk or small building that would provide more detailed information, trail information, and perhaps be large enough to have the opportunity to, say, check out a kayak or something like that. And then, lastly, the area that's indicated here is actually the old sewage treatment plant that sits within Griffin Park, and we're suggesting that, that be repurposed and reused and integrated better into the park. And I believe that, that one particular section of land actually is owned by the city and it's currently zoned industrial. And so that would be the, the one last land use recommendation as part of this plan would be to change that also out of industrial into that park's land use designation. And so then, moving to the Eastern Corridor as the final component. Here again, very few physical improvements in terms of it outside the river corridor. Those connections here again is just reiterating and supporting previously adopted plans that have identified a, a potential trail connection in the future between Canyon City and, and Florence, and actually, a consultant team has been selected and just began work on that, working with the Rec and Parks District and the city of Florence to really study that connection in detail. So that next step study is already underway or has just begun. And then, it's simply some additional connections from neighborhoods to the south, as well as perhaps a connection from the existing trail, which is basically along the sewer easement, getting people down to the river at the location at McKenzie, because this land that's indicated here in color was recently, an agreement was recently put in place where the city is leasing that land for another takeout point along the river. So that lease recently was put in place, and so that area really hasn't been developed, and so in terms of developing that area and getting better access to that area, we're sug, suggesting, A, a trail connection along the western right-of-way of McKenzie down to that takeout area, and then some basic sort of parking and organization work on that land, so it functions better for both commercial rafters as well as individuals. And then, this isn't meant to be read and walked through in detail, but one component of the plan that is in every chapter, and I'm just highlighting it in this particular section, is the actual riparian conservation strategies or sort of the in-river strategies. So that's another component that's in every single chapter of the plan. There was so much information to go through, I tried to at least highlight it in this particular chapter, because, again, as we move from sort of the western portion of the study area in the Downtown Core, which talks more, more about sort of opportunities adjacent to the riverbank, as well as the opportunities internal to the river itself, the further that you move east, more and more of the recommendations are primarily focused on the in-river improvements, retaining that, that flood protection and, and things of that nature. And so that is in each chapter of the plan as well. And then, this graphic, again, this graphic is, similar graphic is in each of the different chapters, simply outlining where the true riparian zone in, is where a pond or lake exists and where the wetland areas are. And then, per a table in the document, so a table is coded with different types of suggestions such as creating additional- coded with different types of suggestions, such as creating additional buffers or improving in-stream improvements, and then those are mapped and identified in the different sections of the plan, and that's what the B represents in this particular graphic. So then moving on to the second to last chapter of the plan, the consultant team also took a look at signage and wayfinding, and so the effort for this study sort of is in-between previous planning efforts in terms of signage, and that includes the conceptual signage that was approved by council, which you see here, and a next level effort, which literally, hopefully, in another month here or so, we will be going to council with recommendation of a consultant team to complete the detailed design of these signs, because this is just a concept, so we actually have to do the complete detailed design of that. That will be moving forward here, hopefully, starting the first of the year, and so as in-between piece of this, we had this consultant team actually identify some recommendations of where they would place the signage within the study area, and so that's what this chapter focuses on. So that will be looked at in much greater detail, moving forward with this consultant team, presuming we get them signed up here shortly. And then the last chapter, how do we get this done? I think it's critical to mention, and I probably should have mentioned upfront, it's really important to remember that this is basically a 20-year plan, it may be 20 years plus, and so how do we really break it down into different phases to bite off little pieces, and what is the most important? And so this chapter looks at that. So the implementation chapter, again, is organized by zone, the four sections, it is then organized by topic area, so the four topic areas are land use and character, basically the vision graphic, the concept vision, thirdly, recreational improvements, fourth, river and riparian improvements, and then there's a timeline identified. What is really, what do we need to start working on day one, in the first 12 months? What can realistically be worked on? And then we have it broken out between near term, which is basically from 12 months to about two years, a midterm and a long term, and anything identified as long term in the plan is basically 10 years and out. So that's organized that way in the plan document, in the tables that you see in that chapter. And then the final component is cost. So first, you have to remember that this is a planning level effort, so it's basically, you know, 20, 30, 40,000-foot look effort, but we try to identify very high order of magnitude, you know, how much is this stuff going to cost to do? And so we basically identified a dollar sign, anything from a single dollar sign up to four-dollar signs, that basically say, a single dollar sign is a little bit more palatable, and four-dollar signs is, you know, a very expensive project that you really need to think about how you're going to fund, and it might be there for a longer-term project. So that's how that chapter is organized, I'm not going to go through every single component of that chapter, piece by piece, but what I did do is I simply pulled out the priorities that were identified for each zone, so, and that immediate timeframe, so what do we really need to start on in the next 12 months? And this is what was identified between, you know, working with the consultant team and staff to identify these immediate timeframe actions. So for the western gateway, it's pretty much focused on the signage implementation, and I spoke about that, that hopefully, we already have that going here very shortly, if we can get a signage consultant under contract and going in the first of the year, so we can get going on that in the next 12 months. Within the downtown core district, the immediate timeframe piece that came to the top is obviously the Centennial Park Phase One improvements, and make sure we continue getting those into place and implementing those, and that's primarily the pavilion, a riverfront amphitheater that would be sort of built into the river's edge, a new lawn and new restroom facilities, and obviously, the splash pad has already been completed. So that would be the immediate actions for the downtown core. For Griffin Park, it's, again, the signage implementation, and that will have to be coordinated with the Wrenckin Park District, and then actually doing sort of a concept design for redesign of the sanitation plant and integration into Griffin Park. And then in terms of the eastern corridor, is really focusing on that public boat access improvement, so actually doing some design work and putting some cost to that in terms of how can we really make that a usable takeout area? So those are really the key immediate actions, and, you know, immediate is all relative when we're talking about plans like this, so this is what we're identifying as, hopefully, goals for the next 12 months. So with that, based on the discussion here this evening and Planning Commission's recommendation, there, after tonight, there will be one more council vision committee meeting, the second time we're having a committee meeting with council to walk through the plan, and that's scheduled on 11/15, that's actually a special date, because it's originally scheduled the Wednesday before Thanksgiving, so we've moved it up one week, knowing that some folks probably are not going to be available the day before Thanksgiving. So that's on 11/15, and then ideally, this would go to council on 12/4 to adopt by resolution as an amendment to the comprehensive plan. And so with that, I'm done.
Well, thank you very much, that was a good presentation. Before I see if we have any questions of staff, maybe we should see if there's any comments from the audience. Show of hands, who wants to come up and talk? If you do want to come up and talk, please sign in at that table and then come up to the podium and state your name and address, please. Oh, it's, okay, it's up there. Yes, please.
My name is Seattle Moss, I've lived here for, in Canyon City, for a long time, and have utilized the Riverwalk for, since its inception, effectively. Also served on the committee that fought off the turning of John Griffin Park into a baseball stadium location. Those of you who've lived here for some time probably remember, we had that issue for a while, that has to do with mixing of passive and active recreation together, which I'm surprised that planners would consider putting some kind of a pump hill, pump track, which is where kids ride their bicycles up and down, and, of course, that's pretty active, they yell and scream, and that's fine, but active recreation in the middle of passive recreation can create problems, and the people in the city spoke back then, they really liked their nature, they liked the quiet, if you walk the Riverwalk, you can get down into the John Griffin Park area and not hear the city and the traffic and all of the sounds that are more, more active, you get to hear nature, you hear silence sometimes, I was just down there just now, it was very quiet. So I would like you to consider that something like the pump track is a very inappropriate usage for the place where the old sewage district is at, and also note that there is a pump track that's right down by the train station. And I've looked at it a few times, I see it occasionally being used, but it's not very well-used, so maybe if the city would like to do something, I think that sounds like a neat thing, but they maybe ought to work at making that more enjoyable or something, so the kids go down there and use it. The other thing I wanted to make quickly, recommend, is there's the comments in the plan about the river health, and they make some very good, I think, recommendations and observations. What they've done so far in our town to mitigate flood has been temporary and is ineffective as they state, and in the long run, you need to do something that is going to restore some of the natural health of the river. If you just sit there and riprap in is really not helpful, it's really harmful for boating folks, and can be harmful, difficult for people who are fishing to have all that riprap, and I think it's great to try to get some of that riprap out, and also to provide a way of getting water during high flows into the Griffin Park area during floods and other areas, where we've hardened the banks and made it impossible for the current beautiful cottonwood forest that's in there to continue. If you go down there, we're losing lots of them, and that's fine, that's part of nature, they come and they go, but we don't have a lot of recruitment, there's not a lot of young trees, young cottonwoods, young willows, and that's because they're not getting the water, because we have, we've hardened it so they can't get the water, so I encourage you to support restoring the natural balance of the river. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just add one thing, my friends that are private property owners in this are still really concerned, they really don't like seeing things on here, where you're trying to redistrict their property uses, so I would encourage you to rethink about that, that's sacred.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question of Ms. Moss?
Yes, please.
Yes, ma'am, I heard what you said about the existing sewage treatment, defunct sewage treatment area, the, what, what in your mind would be a better use of that area or uses? Do you have several in mind, or do you have a preferred one?
Well, I think what they've recommended, one possibility would be some type, botanic gardens doesn't mean it has to be some kind of fancy thing, naturally, a natural, a native botanic garden area would be great. I'm on the Arkansas Valley Audubon Society, and we'd be happy to work with the city on that. I think people in this town would love to learn how to use natural habitat, natural vegetation, natural flowers, native vegetation, and how that helps with our butterflies and birds that the folks here enjoy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's a great idea, by the way. I haven't heard that one yet.
It seems quite.
Is it? I should have read it closer.
As I stated earlier, my name's Doug Cohen, I live at 1102 Vine Street. I was on this committee, I attended every hearing in the evening or every presentation that has been transpired. Seattle said it very well, that the private property ownies, owners along the river corridor have made it very, very abundantly clear, that especially from Ninth Street East, that we do not want any development in that area on the north side of the river. We have, I think we have all the property owners here tonight, and they're very adamant to that, we want to keep it like we have, we have small farms at the present time. Unfortunately, just on our place, we got about 26 deer camping, and it's a nice area down there. And I would like to get clarification from Deena, I had spoke earlier about one parcel of our property possibly being overlaid to Riverfront Residential, and I really don't have a problem with that, but then, I think, Deena, did you say that the rest on the north side of the property also may be planned for future development, or what is the use from, let's say, the bottom of 11th Street East, as far down to McKenzie or Reynolds?
Yep. So, again, the only land use changes that we're recommending are basically to 11th Street, and east of that, outside of the old sewage treatment plant in Griffin Park, we are making no other land use change recommendations in this plan.
Okay, thank you. And I'd also like another, ask Deena, if you know, how many accesses do you plan or in the plan from the north side of the river to the south side of the river, from Ninth Street down to McKenzie?
I believe it is primarily three, and those are, for the most part, improvements to existing connections. So for instance, so if you're saying, starting at Ninth, so on, at Ninth, we know that there's a bridge crossing the river there, and there are sidewalks, if you can call them that, on both sides of the bridge, but they're both very narrow, so the plan recommends improving and having kind of a parallel additional bike-ped route crossing the river on the west side of Ninth. And then we recommended crossing, or doing an improved connection on Reynolds, as I pointed out in that district, and then from McKenzie, the improvement was really only identified from the existing trail on the existing sewage treatment alignment north to the river. So I believe those are the only three from the nor, well, you said from the north, so really, the only two from the north are improved connection along Ninth Street and any redevelopment of that area, and then Reynolds, because the one at McKenzie is technically from the south.
Okay, thank you. And I would like to commend everybody on that committee, Deena, the consultants, it's been a tough process, there were some people left out of the process, it should have been notified, the things weren't, and caused a lot larger audience at the Vision Committee, and so, but I would like to commend everybody involved, it's been, it's been interesting, I've really enjoyed it, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cohen. Okay, any other comments from the audience? So at this time, any questions from commission for staff?
Mr. Chairman, I do.
Commissioner Harmon?
Can I get some clarification, please, on, I understand the, I was at the Vision Committee meeting and heard all of the owners and understand their concerns, obviously, and it was made pretty clear that their concerns were heard, but also not as big of an issue as they believed they were, because nobody's going to take their property. But we are going to be dealing with potential zoning changes. When us, as a planning commission, need to review zoning issues, we take the comprehensive plan into consideration, what requirements will there be on existing landowners if there are zoning changes made? What requirements will there be for them to bring their property up to code?
So this, this master plan process is not adopting any zoning changes, it's adopting land use changes, so the land use categories that I walked through, and then from that, the next step, or a next step, and that's identified in the implementation strategy, would be to create zoning, new zoning to support the new land use categories. And in that recommendation, we, so we are identifying, a next step is to create a new Riverfront Mixed Use Zone District, we're recommending creating the language and just having the language exist without actively mapping, so that if a current property owner or a future property owner that comes in and has a property along the riverfront, if they fall within that land use category, there is already a zone district in place, they'll have to go through a rezoning process, but the language in the district will exist. So we're sort of, we're recommending doing the first step of zoning, which is just creating the zone district and creating the language and having it there, so that if somebody wants to use and wants to rezone, they can do that, but we're not recommending at this time to actively rezone any property.
Would it be worded so that if there was a transfer of ownership, they would require to go through a process of rezoning?
No, I mean, the, by virtue of the, this plan being adopted, the new land use category would be identified, which is, again, that first level of.
It's a high-level overlay, so to speak.
Designation.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Commissioner Bates?
Tell me what this says, proposed zone changes and other regulatory or design requirements that will be necessary to accomplish the desired development, that doesn't sound real good.
Can you tell me where you're quoting that from?
I'm looking at page five, second one from the bottom, and give me what the definition of that is. of that is.
Okay, so you're looking at the the gold box that has the overall goals of the plan that were identified?
Yes.
So and you're looking at the second to last bullet. Right, so that goal, so so this was a goal that was established at the very beginning of the process when the budget was established for this work. And again, that reads proposed zone changes and other regulatory or design requirements that will be necessary to accomplish the desired development. So the components that we've identified in the plan that meet that goal of the plan are, as I identified, first and foremost, identifying the few land use changes that I pointed out. So creating a new Riverfront Mixed Use land use category, creating the new Riverfront Residential land use category, and then reallocating basically either what's currently identified as undeveloped land and/or industrial land to public land. Those are basically the land use changes that we're recommending in the plan. As there's also some very, very high level design character recommendations that are in the plan. We didn't really talk about those this evening. So those are in the plan. And then in terms of a next step, so in that implementation chapter, as a next step of the study would be to look at new zoning language and new a new zone category or categories that would support the new land use categories that are being identified as part of the plan.
So if somebody had 20 20 acres, and a better part of that was a front of that was on the river, and it was basically, let's say, agricultural in nature, and it falls into this new category of land exchange, whatever the KMS be, how does that affect them, number one, in zoning, if it goes into that? Does it affect the cost of their land? Does the county land tax increase or decrease? And how does it affect the future if they want to sell that property? That when they bought it, it was it was agricultural, and now it's going to be under a a different land? I guess what you're trying to I see two things here. One's land, one's zoning. Either one of them, how's either one of them going to affect the future if somebody wants to sell that property as agricultural and they find out it is now a Riverfront Residential? How does that affect them?
So the the city currently does not have an agricultural land use district?
I'm just, okay, let's let's I'm using that as an example, because I can think of a couple of people on the river that have agriculture or it's commercial, one of the two, and it's 40 acres of clear land. The point I'm trying to sort 20 acres, what I'm trying to say is, what is that if how does that affect them? Either one of your categories here, okay? If you change that to Riverfront Residential, okay, how does that affect, number one, their ability to sell it, okay? Number two, and the cost of rezoning it with the county? If it's going to change the zoning of it?
Well, so we we're in the city of Canyon City. So any recommendations that we're making for any land use changes or zone or in future potential zoning changes are only within the city limits.
Yeah.
So that's first important to note. Secondly, if if you're using agricultural as an example, that's a zone district within the city. So if their land is currently zoned agricultural, we're not rezoning their land by virtue of adoption of this plan.
No, but you're doing a land exchange or change or whatever. It still ends up with a zoning, maybe that's the wrong word, a reclassification of a land. How's that sound?
I don't think that's, I'm sorry, that but that's that's not quite accurate. So this says, you know, in the future, we would like, and Deena can kind of correct me from the planning side, we would like this property to be developed in this fashion. It does not constitute a zoning change, and the property would not be reclassified for tax purposes, which I think is what you might be referring to.
I'm I am.
So as long as it's it's used as agricultural, this plan doesn't affect that
It hasn't affected the ability to resell if they want to sell it.
It doesn't.
It's not actually changing any zones.
It's not changing anything. They resell the property as it is on the ground, and they they sell it. So.
Then why is that?
Okay. I think one comment that I heard in the Vision Committee meeting is that it's it's a recognition of a valuable piece of land, potentially a valuable piece of land to the city. And they vision this, they picture this as being used in possibly a different way in the future. But there's no hard and fast requirement that it happen right now or that anybody needs to sell their property. It's just really a picture of what they they visualize in the next 20 years. So and that's why I asked the same question about the land use before, too, is it just to make sure the owners didn't have any
But what you just said equates out to a threat to those landlords indirectly, subtly. That's how they look at it, is what I'm trying to tell you.
So I don't know. Let me maybe simplify this. So the the master plan is developing these different designations, Commissioner Bates, but there's nothing being implemented? They're just available for possible future use?
Well, this this plan is only identifying a land use category.
Right.
Right, as an amendment to the city's master plan or comp plan. A future step or a next step would be to create the zone district language that would support that land use. That would be a future step after this process is complete.
Right.
I think I think one of the questions that it seems like I've heard reverberated, and I and may I just need some clarification on this. Does what this plan entails, does what we're looking at provide ability? So, for example, say, Mr. Cohen, some of his land was there, and he wanted it to end up in his great grandkid's hands. Theoretically, does it allow if that if he wants it to stay, I'm not sure what he even had, but perhaps an apple orchard for the next three generations, does what we're setting in motion basically allow him and give him the freedoms to leave that land as it exists currently?
From, yes.
So I I
So why is it there?
So essentially, we're we're basically doing overlays that expand some possibilities, but they don't limit anything that it currently exists.
The only thing I would, well, the only thing I would say would limit future development is is some of the recommendations on the south side of the river between First and Ninth, where currently, from a land use perspective, it's identified as undeveloped. And if you read that language, I'm happy to read that to you this evening, you know, the definition of that land use category as it currently exists within the city, as an adopted and mapped land use category, it's identified as undeveloped. And if you read the description, it basically says land for future development. So in some of these areas, we're actually suggesting changing that to the the public space land use category. So that would be putting more restriction on it in terms of keeping it as open space, which is what we heard was desired from some folks in that area.
So you would be affecting people's land, that even though it's undeveloped, if they're their owners?
Is it mostly privately held, the undeveloped land?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner Hammerick, any additional comments or questions?
The I did I did go through the document and and looked at editorial type issues. And I did provide a list of suggested changes to Deena. Deena, did you have, yes, mm-hmm? And have you had a chance to review those?
Not in detail. I've only had a chance to glance through them, and thank you very much for providing that.
You're welcome. And I would ask that that be included as part of our record that the Commissioner, that the city council may review when they when they take final action on this plan. I did have one particular comment or issue, and it and it really, you know, the in in my career, I've dealt a lot with consultants and the work product of consultants. And my concern is for what the city has purchased. And I noted in one of my comments that that reference was made to certain aerial data, 3D data, that appeared to be GIS in nature.
Yes. And and I know your your question on that to me was, will we be receiving that electronically, kind of the native files? My expectation is yes. I haven't specifically asked that yet of the consultants. We will be getting our final product when they finish their work.
And as a thank you very much. And as a corollary to that, does that mean that we will that we, the city, will also receive this final report in an editable format? In other words, not just a PDF, but actually either Word files or, you know, various types of files that since this report will belong to the city, that we at some future point can edit as needed as as things change within
I will be requesting that, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions of committee? Yes, Mr. Liddo.
Yes, the the area west of Ninth Street and south of the River Trax, you said one of the alternatives was potentially a recreation center in that area?
The, well, north side of the river.
Wasn't pushed forward.
Correct. In terms of, let me just get to that graphic. So, correct, in terms of the so you're you're talking about this area here, basically, the the river Ninth and the River Trax. And in the alternatives phase, this showed the potential site for a rec center. And based on the the input we received from that alternative phase, the rec center dropped out, wasn't felt that that was the highest and best use of of the land in that area in the future. So that did not move forward in terms of the preferred recommendation for that area.
Essentially, economics was the the specific reason for that?
I'd have to go back and look at the the individual comments. I think, you know, primarily, it was when folks did comment on what do you prefer generally in terms of the two options for this area, more people gravitated to hotel and a more variety of mixed use development with more kind of cafes and and Riverwalk overlooks in that area.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I, Mr. Chairman, I had a question. On page 27. At that First Street light that currently exists, in the diagram, they have a basically a closing of First Street there. Is that a
Are you on you're on page 27?
Yeah. That's Third?
Yes, Third Street.
I'm sorry. Yes, correct. I misquoted that. Is that an actual closing? In two different pictures, they have one that shows a sidewalk along the street, and in this one, it's a actual closing over here.
Right. So the graphic you're seeing on page 27 was the final graphic from the Centennial Park Master Plan phase of the project. At the end of that, or towards the end of that phase, and moving into the master plan phase of the project, it was identified that, no, we're not going to be closing Third Street. So hence, the updated version in the overall master plan shows a connection, but basically a connection along sort of the back of curb or a sidewalk environment, not closing the street. So maybe we
It would be more in line with the street still open and
Correct.
the west side of the street is now turned into a pedestrian
The plaza, yep.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I have one
Commissioner Hammerick, yes, go ahead.
And it's it's kind of, I guess, to the to the property owners as a whole, one of the stream corridor management themes that that are contained in this plan includes stream bank improvements for for the safety, improved aesthetics, and ecological health of the river, remove broken concrete, riprap, and trash rubble from banks. And my question that kind of is to the to the property owners, if the city was willing to come in, if you have Riverfront property and make some improvements like that to the two-year riverbanks, are is there concerns there?
Come on up.
Doug Cohen, 1102 Vine. I can't speak for the rest of the property owners, but I can speak for myself and my wife. Our riverbank is all natural now. There's a portion of it on a two-acre parcel that does have rock, but there's no riprap, per se, concrete or whatever. Would we allow the city to come in? I suppose that would remain to be seen. Certain conditions or whatever. One thing I am concerned about is to keep that river as clear as possible. We haven't seen a lot of water in a long time, but it's still possible. And with boulders and such being put into the river, along with in the river plan itself, there are, I don't know exactly what you call them, but there's boulders on either side of the river, on both sides of the river that go into the river. To me, that seems to be an obstruction, especially during the runoff period, when there's a lot of debris in the river. And so I would ask or hope that whoever is in charge or whatever they want to do, certainly, they need to to get a hold of property owners, but also to keep that river as free as possible of any obstruction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Cohen. And I was on the committee with you, and you remember, we had a gentleman that was a an expert on, you know, natural habitats of the river. So I think that was a huge part of this plan, was to make sure that, you know, everything was brought back to its most natural habitats. Do you remember that discussion? Yeah. Okay. Any other questions, concerns, comments from the audience, comments from Commission? Mr. Liddo?
I have one more thing.
Yes.
Page 11, on the the right-hand side, the third paragraph down, discussing the multiple diversions in that Western Gateway area. I guess the the second sentence, you know, the the River Improvements Detail Plan outlines the removal of diversions to improve recreational safety. If I remember right, I believe that once to read outlines the modifications of diversions to improve recreational safety. I think we want to make it clear that basically those those diversions aren't to be removed, but yet modified for safety issues. And to that end, on the Western Gateway, I would like to see an additional river access upstream of that Oil Creek Ditch diversion, to give people the option to either not run the Oil Creek Ditch diversion, or frankly, use the use the proposed ramp and and basically do laps on on that diversion.
And sorry, Brian, I was taking notes. The upstream component, did you say intake? The additional intake or diversions?
The, well, I guess the the upstream end of the, what is the Black Hills property? I mean, if there's a a trail up there and a road for camping, if a secondary boat ramp was up there
That's
even for for vehicle access, that would give river runners the option to to get out before their Oil Creek Ditch diversion. And it obviously, that that is downstream of the city's, you know, municipal intake, which is further upstream.
Okay, anything else? Someone in the audience waving. Can you can you please sign in and then please state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Eileen Lakey, and I live at 1501 Cliff Drive. And I'm looking at a different thing. I'm here to represent the residents of Cliff Drive. And we were wondering how for the John Griffin Trailhead you chose, how did you chose those three different spots of entry from the river up into our neighborhoods?
So let me go to that graphic. So I think the they were chosen in terms of where there was an existing easement or right-of-way of some sort primarily that was already adjacent or budding up right-of-way of some sort, primarily, that was already adjacent or budding up to the park, was the, the primary reason for the locations. The secondary reason was to just sort of space them out a bit from west to east throughout the park.
Well, I don't know if you've ever been on Cliff Drive, but it's one block long. It has six residents, and then two going around the corner on Pisgah. It's a very narrow country, little street, and we're real concerned, because there is no parking on that street. And in all honesty, people aren't going to walk to get to that trail, they're going to drive. And so we're real concerned about the congestion that that might cause. We're concerned about the maintenance of that road. We're also kind of concerned, because we all chose that particular place, because it was secluded. It's a dead-end street, has one way in and one way out, and we feel that, that trail is not really going to benefit us. We're all older. We all value that kind of peaceful, quiet neighborhood that we live in, and we're concerned about the increase of that foot traffic from down below up into our residence, into our residential neighborhood. We're concerned for our pets, our property, ourselves. And we were just wondering how that was chose. We also are wondering about, you know, that traffic issue, with that flow of people coming in and out of Pisgah. I don't know if you've ever been up there, but it's not a very big street. It's quite closed in, and so we, we just had some concerns about that. And I, we wanted to bring that, several people tonight wanted to come and couldn't because of health issues. We also have an issue, and I brought the paper, it just was kind of interesting, across from you came out the picture of the big black bear that was in the paper. We do have concerns for people on the, on the Riverwalk coming up through there. For some reason, our little corridor up there has become the traffic corridor for the bears. We have bears every single day and night. They have been in our backyard at noon, in our apple tree, a big, big sow with her cubs, not afraid of us at all. She's like from me to you, from my bedroom window, and not my French doors, and not moving. This big guy has been in our property, he's been in our property, he's been in the property across the street. We've had bears in our house. They are becoming more aggressive. They are there during the early morning, they're there during the afternoon, and so we're kind of concerned for people on that Riverwalk who might be coming up through that area, that's really, a really dense area. And so we just had concerns for the hazards that might be for people coming into that area. And it was just interesting that on that day, there was that bear in the John Griffin area, so.
I've had, I've had bear broke, knocked my fence down in my yard twice.
Yeah, and it's a huge bear.
And I'm up there, too.
We, we've had this year, there are probably, there's a couple sows with cubs, there's that huge bear, and there's a couple other bears that just roam. In fact, they tore into my chicken house and killed the chicken. They're there a lot, and so we have that concern. We just have real concern that Pisgah may not be the good location for that trail coming up, because of the smallness of the street, the smallness of that, that circular turn that's in there. People would have to be parking in our property, on our property, probably. When we have family gatherings, a couple of the families have gatherings, it's actually hard to get in and out of our street. Today, we had four cars, I counted, I was out there for six and a half hours in my great big garden. We had four cars on that street. So we aren't a very busy street, and we really do value our privacy and our security, and we are concerned for not only people on that trail, but for us, and what this might mean as changing our neighborhood. So we'd like to, you to maybe just take a look at that again and reconsider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question on that. Dina, is the, these are walking trails that we're talking about, is that correct? These are not intended for vehicle traffic?
Correct.
Is it possible they could be bicycle traffic?
Possibly.
Conceptually, I mean, that's where this is?
You know, maybe if, if the grades would work. Obviously, that's a pretty steep area.
Yeah, downhill, it'd be downhill.
So, yeah, and they're intended to be, again, as they're called, neighborhood connections, meaning folks that actually live in the neighborhood, to allow them to get into the park without having to kind of drive all the way around to get to the Riverwalk.
As opposed to being a magnet for outside people to come and park?
Correct.
The intention, anyway.
Yes.
Chairman?
Yes.
I had one last thing.
Yes, Mr. Ledoux.
I, I know it seems like this subject is beating a dead horse. All of the committee members that were involved in putting this together, this is a, this is a beautiful asset to Canyon City. It is a enhancement to our community. I think it's taking our whole river corridor in a, in a positive direction. The only caution I'm going to urge, and I think this has probably been most of the blowback that I've sensed, is that some of the successful advancements we've had in the community have been through a nudging in a positive direction as opposed to a push. And I think that the blowback you're getting is when people feel pushed. For example, you know, like, on page twenty-seven, I'm the property owner of the, of the plaza. I think it's an asset, as long as it's a property owner's decision to be a part of that progress, I think that they're going to be probably more than willing to be a participant. It's when they feel pushed that you're getting blowback. And I think that as long as the city and as the community members that are involved in moving this project forward are presenting it in a nudge of enhancement as opposed to a push, I think that you'll get a lot greater support in the future.
I completely agree, and I, I was on that committee for most of the part of it, and, you know, sometimes you just, you have to have a plan. If you don't have a plan, then nothing will ever happen.
Absolutely.
And the, our river corridor is the most underutilized, but our biggest asset we have in this community. So we, you know, we have to take some steps to do something. So, on that note, we're going to vote on a recommendation to city council on this resolution, assuming there's no other comments or questions of staff.
Okay, so there's no findings of fact, but we are going to, I am going to call for a motion and a second to consider the Arkansas River Corridor Master Plan as an amendment to the Canyon City Master Plan. Would anyone like to make a motion?
I make that motion, Chairman.
Commissioner Hammerick? Harmon? I'm going to have a hard time not saying Hammerick when you leave. Okay, Commissioner Harmon, thank you. Do we have a second?
One second.
Commissioner Ledoux, any further discussion?
The, so question, the, the resolu, the motion is to adopt the resolution that we have in our packets.
Yeah, yes. We're, we're making the, the recommendation to council to adopt the resolution as an amendment to the Canyon City.
Resolution number two, series of twenty seventeen.
Commissioner Harmon, would you like to amend your motion to say, to adopt? Where did, I just lost it.
Sure, yeah.
Please say that again, resolution number two?
Series of twenty seventeen.
Series twenty seventeen.
I move that we adopt resolution number two, series of two thousand seventeen.
Do we have a second?
One second.
Commissioner Ledoux, any further discussion?
How to reincorporate the, the few minor details, including the grammatical edits and additional boat ramp?
That's a good question.
So the, I mean, I would suggest that the grammatical edits, I've made note of, those are obviously very detailed versus just the broad adoption or, or recommendation for adoption. We will definitely make the consistency changes and, and some of the edits that inevitably will, will be there in a draft plan like this. So those will move forward. Final edits probably will not be done until after the next council committee meeting.
So those will be included in our recommendation, correct? The?
Right, I think Commissioner Hammerick mentioned that he would like that noted as part of your resolution recommending, so I guess that would be a, another whereas added to the resolution? Does the city attorney want to weigh in on that? How we should consider that?
No, I would say at the end, attached to here and incorporated, and by this reference, incorporated here in with the recommended changes from?
From the October twenty-fifth planning commission meeting?
Mm-hmm, yep, that's fine.
Do we need to amend the motion?
Do we get a new one?
Yes.
You can amend your motion to say it has amended.
I, I, I would like to amend my emo, my, my motion, my emotion. I'd like to amend my motion as directed by the attorney, as worded by the attorney, we'll put it that way.
Fair enough.
That works, yeah.
And we still have a second? Oh, yes.
And before we vote, is there, Councilman Gill, is there anything that you would like to say, or anything that, that, that you think the city council would like to hear from us in this, in this action?
Really, I think you guys have covered it pretty well. This plan has been gone over, you know, in rough craft and such, by probably more levels of, of city staff and government than a lot of things really are. So I think that, you know, the notes that are made here, and the concerns that are made here, will be duly noted, and I don't see anything that's objectionable, as far as I can speak for myself, okay? When it goes to council, then I'm sure, as everything that goes, everybody, a different set of ears, a different brain, are going to come up with, with different ideas and different questions. So I think the job has been done here and done very well, between the committee and the planning commission. A lot of work has been put in by staff, very commendable job, it's a lot of work, and it's something that just builds a dream for, for each and every one of us, and the people down the road from us, for a, a bright future and a, a good recreation area for Canyon City. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Time for, please call, roll Denise.
Certainly. Commissioner Harmon?
Aye.
Commissioner Ledoux?
Aye.
Chairman Maloney?
Aye.
Commissioner Bates?
Aye.
Commissioner Dorito?
Aye.
Commissioner Clark?
Aye.
Commissioner Hammerick?
Aye.
Okay, our recommendation passes. Okay, any announcements, special events, trivia questions? Anybody have anything? If that's it, I, Ms. Berna?
I have something that I'd like to hand out to you. At the last vision committee, there was a listening session on building code issues. I'm not sure, other than Commissioner Gill, if any of you were there, oh, yes, that is on. But Mr. Hale, who also attended that and spoke, wrote a letter to council, wanted planning commission members to have a copy of his letter, so I'm going to pass that out to you. No action is required, he just wanted you to be aware of his comments. So I'm just going to give this to you, and you can take it home and read it if you'd like.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
On the building code thing, I've had a thought, I've got a copy of that. I've had a thought, it's like, everybody's trying to look at redoing the whole building code. I know that, that staff invited well over three hundred people that are in this business to come to this meeting, and not one of them showed up. I had the opportunity to speak to one of them, who was getting a building permit up here at City Hall, and I said, okay, you know, this affects you, why, why, you know, why didn't anybody show up? And his basic comment was, well, you know, we do this for a living, we know the rules, so we don't really, you know, have a lot of problems. So my take on that, or my thought on that, would be, in, in order to move this forward, because I think it's very important, that we somehow solicit input from people who do have problems with, like, egress on windows on a brick house, for like, you know, the historic buildings where they can't really be brought up to code. Let's bring a list of the problems that people are encountering, both on a professional level and a citizen level, and then address those problems rather than trying to address the whole code, because these codebooks are about this deep, and there's a lot of stuff that works in them. So let's find out what areas that we need to improve or make some amendments on, and then work on those. So let's find the problems and fix those rather than trying to fix the whole code. And that's just kind of where I was thinking on that, you know, after a dismal outcome of, you know, people that we invited, that it, that it affects on a daily basis that they work with. And then also, like I said, a private citizen is trying to put a front porch on his house. So let's find out, get a list of problems, or find a way to solicit a list of problems, and then address that list, rather than addressing, you know, the, what, the two thousand six and the two thousand sixteen code, if I'm not mistaken, folks?
We're currently using the primarily two thousand six.
Two thousand six, right, and then there's another code out that is what year?
Twenty fifteen.
Twenty fifteen. But like I said, let's just address where the problems are in, in our specific city, and, and get the problems, and try to make, you know, adjustments on that as a direction.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question on that statement. If there was a opportunity for people to come and address those issues, how would you now address your list of problems?
I'm not sure I understand.
Well, if I heard you right, you had an opportunity for people to come, address those issues with the city codes and stuff?
Correct.
And no one attended.
And no one attended.
And the reciprocation you got from your question was, well, we work with this, so we know what it is.
Right.
In lieu of that, what you just said about getting the problems and putting them together and addressing those in the city code, how would you get the individuals with the problem to address that?
Put it out there in a different way. Like, okay, we have a problem with the historic downtown, right? Moving a new business in, and doing the, you know, holding them to a, to a more current code. Okay, we have a problem with, let's pick a number, or let's pick an item, with the height of the wall sockets?
Right.
In a historic building. The new code says it's supposed to be here, they're here. Address, like, you know, that's just, I'm picking that out of the blue sky. But find out what the problems are, and find out what a, what a good exception or a good adjustment would be, that would still maintain the health, well, you know, the health and safety and welfare of everybody, but yet accommodate those people that are trying to renovate. Houses even built in the fifties, not to mention the ones that are built in the eighteen hundreds. So find a list of the problems that people are encountering, and, and then address that in the code, rather than trying to address the entire code.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, Nick, if you, if you kept with the three basics on the older buildings, health, safety, and welfare, and the rest of the stuff?
Correct.
That's, that's what you need to deal with on the older buildings.
Absolutely. And then, like I said, some of the houses built in the fifties, you can't, it was a brick house, and this was something that a, that a gentleman brought up, a brick house, and couldn't put new windows in it, because the egress for the bedroom, the window wasn't big enough. So what do you do? Chop out the bricks and stuff? Well, it was approved with a CO when they bought the house, when it was built in the fifties, so literally put upgraded windows in it. There's just got to be ways to figure this stuff out. And the reason I bring that up, because it's really the only thing that I've heard, you know, that really doesn't make sense, and I'm sure there's a hundred of them out there.
I can give you a bunch.
Pardon me?
That sounds like a, a side meeting to discuss those issues. Okay, thanks. Thanks for everyone who came out tonight. Hi, Carrie. Anything else? If not, meeting adjourned. Have a good night.